All right, we're going online if you're listening, we're having a little bit of other microphones, so we will try to speak loudly.
Uh huh.
Now, is that a little?
Yeah, hold on just one sec.
Okay. We're gonna take a quick pause and get our audio.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Good.
All right.
We could be back.
All right, we're back with regular microphones.
Yeah.
Hey, great. All right, thanks for everybody for your patience. The date is September eighth, twenty twenty five. The time is five thirty five. I'll call this meeting to order. This is a regular meeting of the Board of Trustees. Roll call, please, Melina.
Trustee Harbison.
Here.
Trustee Wakefield is absent. Trustee Schnicker.
Here.
Trustee Gardner is absent. Trustee George.
Here.
Harper, Tim Harper.
Here.
Cranker.
Here. Great, thank you. Um, do we have any staff or board revisions to the agenda?
And not to the agenda itself, just to agenda item on regarding the resolution on the fire restriction. Um, so I will explain that when we get to seven eight.
Great, thanks. Any board revisions on the agenda? Okay. All right, well now move on to public comment. If you're here for presentations for later, we welcome you to come in a little bit. If you're making public comment on any agenda item or in general, we invite you to come to the microphone. You can state your name, you'll have three minutes. And if you're on Zoom and you'd like to make a public comment, you can click the raise hand button and we will get to you after we get in person public comment. So we opened up for public comment now.
Yes, I do.
Hey, how are you?
Good. Well, I just wanted to come in and have a little chat about, I guess, like, uh, noise ordinances and music here and now. Uh, like, we have a slight, we had a short conversation in the past about just trying to work with our neighbor, which we originally had a little agreement of like, you know, I let them month them up in a month in advance when we're gonna have music. I cut it off at nine P M., which we always do. And, uh, and we've attempted to do not be not super loud, which like, I mean, we're definitely not the loudest bands played in Silverton. And that worked fine, but had a conversation later last week where I sent the email out that I wanted to talk, where she was like, no, September twentieth is gonna be the last time she will tolerate noise above like, just, you know, regular operational noises. Uh, so, uh, so it's the September twentieth concert, like, concert we're putting on for like, the ride for head out of though, is gonna be the last one she's like, not gonna try and call the authorities on us from here on out if I want to have a live band play. It's I A G expects us to find like, I don't know, I don't even know if it's true, this is more up to, I guess, I'd have to be a little more informed with you guys, of the seventy decibels after seven P M., which I have my decimal meter. I am talking way above that right now. Like, I can pull this out, it's a decimal meter. Like, I'm currently talking and it's reading anywhere between like sixty-five to seventy to eighty when I like say five, that's pushing way past seventy decibels. And that's what I'm told by my neighbor that is the, the legislation we adopt as a town. And obviously, like, that makes no sense. We're not a late night bar, we don't, we're not rowdy and disruptive for long periods of time. And obviously, like, I would feel very like hard done by if I was the only restaurant in town that couldn't play music or make a business out of it, like, you know? I think that'd be very important, restaurants playing music till one A M. as they should, and I'm there hanging out, having a great time. But, uh, I'm just the one next who has gotten next door neighbor once. Which, uh, the agenda there, like, I said, I tried to have a conversation with her, but she's telling me you have to, you're gonna play, you've gotta be under seventy decibels, which is not undoable, like, sometimes, like, like, but I just know that tiny alley that just catches sound. It is twenty-five people probably line, which might straight up be in her building, so God knows, like, how that rolls. But I think there should be, or maybe like something we can work on, at events permits I can pursue, like, I'm willing to do the paperwork and the work to like, make sure that we can have music and not feel like I just gotta hang hammer hanging over my head at all times. Cause I do care about my, like, license and my license, I don't want to, you know, have infractions or strikes against it. Yeah.
And for all the folks online and for us here, can you state your name and?
This is Mario Latif, I'm the owner, owner and operator of, uh, El Tampito, over our street.
Thank you. Thanks.
Thanks, Mario. Who is your neighbor?
It is, uh, Jess. I forget the name.
Oh.
Oh. Okay.
My neighbor is Jess.
Thank you.
He, uh, he's somebody built that new building that's still doing, like, being constructed. And we have a pretty good relationship overall, like, I appreciate her as a neighbor in general, like, we think it's been really good, but music's just been like the one thing we highly disagree on and like, I'm gonna do my best to, uh, protect myself and to be able to keep going. Cause like, I love playing music, I can play myself and like, you know, I just, it's fair that, uh, we aren't the only place in my, like, you know, actually have people call on the cops on us, which is, we're not even the place that goes latest, we go till nine P M. Like, six thirty, nine P M., so we do, so, wow, you know?
Thanks, Mario, that's your three minutes and typically the way we'll handle public comment is we'll group this in. And then we have an agenda item later on where we can have kind of, um, open discussion of future agenda items. So based on public comment, the board's welcome to have discussion or give staff direction on how to proceed. Thanks for coming. Do we have additional public comment?
Hi, I'm Megan Brash with Dara Deli on the old Cobain Cafe, the old drive-in down on Green Street at eleven twenty-four. Um, I just wanted to ask about our arrow sign. Um, yeah, I'm gonna try and stay on task, I'm gonna read. Um, the Dara Deli arrow sign has been part of Silverton since around nineteen sixty-nine. Um, and for us, it, we hope that it can serve as sort of an open sign. Um, when I asked staff about it, about using it, I was told, you know, it does not meet dark sky standards. Um, and could not be lit, and I was redirected to come here. I understand those rules, um, but I also believe there's room for balance. And so my request is that the board allow us to light the arrow during business hours only, which are being shortened and the process of being shortened for the season, um, with, you know, occasional evening events, but it would always be turned off when closed. The bulbs are warm around twenty-seven hundred Kelvin and the mounted, uh, they're mounted with, um, the arrows' long edge acting as a shield, so no light is spilling into the sky. Uh, I think this would improve safety and visibility during darker mornings and early sunsets while still respecting the spirit of dark sky.
Excellent. Nice to have people here, by the way. Um, any other public comment? Not related to our presentation? Hey, do we have any public comment on Zoom? Again, you can click the raise hand button and we'll promote you to playlist. Okay, seeing none, we'll close public comment, we'll move on to agenda item four of our consent agenda. Anything to add from staff or questions from the board?
Um, no, so your consent agenda does include the contract for the attorney going from salary back to hourly and a letter of support for Baker's Park.
I had one administrative edit in the attorney contract on page twenty-two, it just looked like there was a duplicative sentence. And two questions for the board. I know in there we had four, in the contract it lists four in-person visits. And then it lists attending at least one monthly meeting. I wanna see if we're gonna discuss that further or if we were good with how it was presented. That's only.
No, I'm fine.
Go ahead, Jim.
Just get him here more, it's great.
Yeah, four in-person.
Four in-person.
Yeah, yeah, yep. I mean, that's kind of, I guess, it's only two, three in-person, so it'll be similar.
Yeah.
Roughly every other meeting and attendance.
Yeah. Great, okay. Any other questions or comments on the consent agenda? All right, I'd entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So.
Second.
Great, roll call, please, Melina.
Trustee Harbison.
Yes.
Trustee Schnicker.
Yes.
Trustee George.
Yes.
Harper.
Yes.
Or Cranker.
Yes.
Great, thank you, moving on to agenda item five, staff reports.
All right, so you'll find our award letter for our C three communities grant. Um, this is seventy-four thousand, seven hundred and thirty-five dollars for upgrades to the transfer station and a refuse manager position, so very exciting there. Um, likely that position wouldn't be open until, uh, next summer, starting in May. Um, and then a reminder that we're holding the state of the town presentation to the community tomorrow at six P M. Um, this should be about an hour presentation and that includes questions. So, uh, we'll have snacks available, it will be in person and on, um, YouTube. Um, but Zoom public comments kind of a weird one to facilitate during that, so either in person or on Zoom or on YouTube. Um, and then we have a volunteer day organized for Melissa Lake Water Intake. Um, so we need manpower to assist us in getting water to the lake. John and I did apply through the Forest Service to use a mini excavator, but we have been denied or pushed off. So we need all hands on deck to help muck out the ditch and restore our water flow. Um, also in September, uh, our newsletter is out, so, um, stay up to date with what's happening in the town. There's a Q R code in the packet or just sign up for any of our communications and you will get newsletter.
Great.
We can't just use it and then ask for forgiveness, lady.
We made the mistake of asking first.
Yes.
But we're just so nice. We like to dot our i's and cross our t's and.
We learn our lessons.
Well, I mean, I know we talked about the circular communities grant, but huge deal.
Yeah.
To get someone out there, be able to facilitate some trash, so moving in the right direction. We're working on it.
Yeah.
This is great. And just anybody in the audience are listening, the Q R code is in the packet or go to the town website, you can easily sign up. Any town information and that's, you know, if job postings are available. Um, the newsletter gives just a highlight, if you don't have time to come to our four-hour meetings, the newsletter is a really great way to see what are the big projects we're working on, what grants have been awarded, what jobs are available. Um, and what's happening, who's new staff, what's happening in town, so highly encourage everybody to stay informed that way. Hey, I wanna, I want to start staff reports. Mario, your running portal on grants is really growing, so way to go.
Yeah, I hope to hit, I hope to hit a, a high number here.
Yeah.
Right.
Part. Okay, moving on to gen item eight, presentations and pro, or six, a gen item six, presentations and proclamations. And we have the Silverton Family Learning Center here. Guys are welcome to come up wherever you're comfortable and we can share. No problem. And having young parents here at this time of night is not easy, so thank you for being here.
Well, thank you so much for having us. I know most of you, um, my name is Weenie Gaskell and I am speaking to you today as Silverton Family Learning Center's Board Secretary. And in that capacity, I am here to ask you to consider our proposal for emergency funding. In short, changes at the state level have really radically altered how we can access or essentially not access state funds. And it does represent a catastrophic loss of funding for our program. Um, I do want you to, oh, I gotta make sure I can advance my slides for you. Let's see. Have any tips about this, I think I need that.
Do you have it set up in slideshow?
I do.
You get your space bar if.
Okay. Let's see. There we go. Thank you for that. So I do want you to leave here tonight with, um, a very realistic picture of what S F L C is facing. Um, how this came to be, what we're doing about it, and yes, please, how you can help. But before we get into nitty gritty details and numbers, which I promised to do, I would like to take some of the time I have in front of you to really, um, speak from my heart. Without that, I don't really think you'll have a full and clear picture of what's at stake. Um, so I'm also speaking to you tonight as a mom and I really cannot separate my motherhood journey from Silverton. There were so many times in my early days of motherhood that I really thanked my lucky stars to be living here. All I had to do was get us bundled and out the door and within moments, we would run into someone that would ask me how I was or peek into the stroller and tell me how beautiful my new baby was. And at some point in those early foggy days, I panicked and I called the preschool and I said, was I supposed to put Iris on some sort of waiting list? And the director at that time very warmly said, oh, we're already planning on Iris in the fall. Um, the teachers there are really kindly and generously planned practice sessions for me and other new moms to spend time with our babies at the center. And at S F L C, the random cohort of people who happen to have children at the same time, we became a community. Um, just to paint that picture for you, just last week, I took a fourth and fifth graders spelunking and I was totally stuck on the other side of the construction, panicking that I would not make it in time for pickup. But I have multiple moms willing to do pickup for Iris and just a couple of days later, I received a text from a mom who works at the ambulance asking if her daughter could come over to our house in case a call came through before the preschool was open. And of course, the answer was yes. I'm sharing these seemingly small details with you, so you have a window into what it's like to be a parent here in Silverton. Um, it's pretty great and new families need a support system. We have that and that is because of S F L C. Um, supporting families has value in and of itself, but well-resourced parents also have the ability to give back to their community and I feel that we do. I'm gonna highlight a piece of my letter to you because I really think it's paramount. If you haven't had small kids in Silverton, you may take our center's impact for granted. We drop off our babies, we rush to take shifts at the ambulance, literally saving lives or educate other people's children or get busy waiting tables or ensuring that our hotel rooms and vacation rentals are clean and open for business. Some parents take the mountains and guide our visitors through San Juan Expeditions or Silverton Mountain, while still others keep our streets plowed and our water running. They represent business owners, nonprofit professionals and law enforcement. Just about any facet of Silverton life that you may appreciate or depend on is strengthened by a workforce that depends on reliable childcare. I was the speaker at graduation last year where eight of the nine graduates were Silverton Family Learning Center, uh, attendees, graduates, baby graduates at the beginning. And I told them that our community had been watching them grow and cheering them on for a long time. And I had really kind of always been on the other side, the teacher, the cheerleader, the community member. Um, and now that there's shoes on the other foot and I get to see this community embrace my daughter and my small family, it's, it's very special. Um, if the old adage is true and it takes a village, um, this is the best village and S F L C is the heart of it. So, faced with the possibility that our funding issues may be insurmountable, um, and closure is unfortunately not out of the question, suddenly being a Silverton family isn't feeling quite so great. I moved here when I was twenty-three years old, I fell in love with this place. I met my husband here, we got married in a blizzard, we're a Silverton family and now we just kinda wanna raise our hearty little mountain kids, that's our dream. And for the first time since my early twenties, I really have to question if Silverton will be a place where my family can continue to thrive, which is sad for me, cause we would not be a family if it wasn't for Silverton. Um, so, how did we get here to this place where families might be questioning if they can thrive? Um, as you saw in your letter, I hope, S F L C has operated as a sustainable organization for twenty years. Um, we've been able to offer excellent care for truly almost no cost to Silverton families or Silverton institutions. And that's because we've been strategically leveraging funds through the Colorado Preschool Program, you're gonna see that represented as C P P. So we'll take a look at that. In this model, you can see that state funding was the biggest piece of our funding pie, which is not typical for small schools with low numbers. State funding is typically tied to enrollment and that can unfairly penalize rural schools. Luckily, C P P had this built-in safeguard in which we and other rural schools could apply for unused slots. Basically, they paid us for more students than we had. And another thing you should know about state funding is that the state is really only concerned with funding three and four-year-olds, actual preschool, because that's what gets kids ready for kindergarten. And we are a full care facility. We offer care from infants through five-year-olds who are literally leaving, you know, they graduate from preschool and they might be in the big school two weeks later. Um, so under this model, the fact that we could apply for those extra slots allowed us to really indirectly support all those classrooms, so infant, toddler and preschool room. Um, so, um, we can look at this as an annual budget. Um, we were previously getting about a hundred fifty thousand dollars a year, also rent and fundraising and tuition was really small. We want you to note that tuition was heavily subsidized under this program. Um, and that I want you to also note that our biggest expenses are salaries and wages. We just, we just wanna be open and we need to support our teachers. Um, we can also look at that at a kind of a monthly breakdown. That's twenty-three thousand, that's about what it takes us to operate each month. Um, and, you know, for about the last twenty years, we could end each month after all of our expenses, um, in the black. And you can, I think those numbers say that we are not extravagant spenders, we're not really, um, trying to break the bank, we wanna have a great program, but our budget isn't huge. Um, so let's compare, um, what we've gotten really used to, to the current reality. So in twenty-twenty-two, Universal Preschool was signed into law and you're gonna see that represented as U P K. And that fully replaced all Colorado preschool programs. Um, I will say, U P K, it's universal preschool, it's a great program for big districts, but it's not working out for us and I want you to have a clear picture of why. So now, um, state funding is fully based on numbers and enrollment, which is hard for us. There's no option to apply for those extra slots. So in the past, we were using that, um, kind of built-in security blanket to get twenty slots. So basically, we're getting fifteen hours paid for, for nearly twenty students every single year, whether they were enrolled or not. Um, also, under U P K, if you look at that second line down, funding for three-year-olds is really significantly reduced and the qualifications are very strident, really only the most needy three-year-olds, uh, will qualify. And so that leaves us in a position of really not knowing if we'll have any funding for three-year-olds. Some years we'll probably have zero dollars, um, there because of how hard it is to qualify. So it's hard for us to budget for that. And lastly, one of the biggest hits for us is just the complete dissolution of what you, um, we'll be here, we'll hear called the historic three-year-old funding. Historic just means they were nice to us, C P P was very generous, they took a year where we had a lot of three-year-olds, they kept paying us as if we had that many three-year-olds every year, knowing that small schools will not always have those numbers every year. And this really was one of the centers like best and most reliable funding sources because it came as an annual lump sum and it was about sixty thousand dollars a year. Um, so that is completely gone, that lump sum. And as this program has rolled out, it's been a very steep learning curve for us and we were not fully aware that this was part, we understood that we would have to work hard to enroll our four and three-year-olds, but this, that final line item, um, unfortunately did come as a surprise to our center. So, again, we can look at what this means for our annual budget and what I'd like you to note here that in just two years, this is a loss of a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars. That's a huge hit for a small nonprofit, it's an almost insurmountable hit for a small nonprofit. And I'd also like you to note that, um, we, we have tried to adapt to this new system and we have raised tuition by almost a hundred and twenty-five percent, which has been a really hard decision for the board to make. Um, and we do feel we've maxed out what our community can afford in tuition. And again, with the program with small numbers, we will never fully be able to fund our program with tuition. That's just not viable for our community and for our center. Um, so again, we can now look at our monthly budget, our expenses can't change too much. Thank you to you all, you've waived our utility fees in this. Thank you to you all. You've waived our utility fees in this time of great stress. The county has also waived our rent. But you, that was, those are never our biggest expenses, even though we really appreciate those helpful measures. Um, we still need to pay our teachers. And hopefully you can see that, that we're, we're ending, we're ending the month, every month of the red. Um, so, um, you may wonder, like, hey, this law started in two thousand twenty-two. Why haven't you better bridged this gap with that time? Um, and recently Natalie and myself and other board members met with Bright Futures. That's an Early Childhood Education Council. They uh they operate by regional chapters, and they support our region and through, and they work throughout the state. And they gave us a lot of great background knowledge. To their knowledge, we were basically one of two schools that was leveraging CPP to get this huge chunk of state funding funneled into a very small school. The only other school that was utilizing this funding model was fully incorporated into their school district. So they had a much better safety net to weather the storm. And, and we, though we have a strong partnership with SBS, we are a standalone nonprofit. Um, Bright Futures also considers that part of their mission to funnel grant opportunities directly to set uh early childhood centers. We were so excited. We're like, great, tell us what we can apply for. And they were like, well, there's not a lot. They, they affirmed that grant funding has also significantly changed. So it's kind of a perfect funding spot. Um, so it was hard for us to let go of this idea that, you know, we wouldn't be a burden to our community, because it was great to be a community with such affordable childcare for so long. But it really has become very transparent to us that the model of using state and grant funding alone is just not our path forward right now. And so here we are. This is the ask. What are we gonna do? Um, our first and most immediate need is to execute our emergency fundraising plan, which you received in your board packet. We are approaching slash have approached um four strategic local funding sources with the goal of raising a hundred thousand by the end of October, and hopefully a hundred forty thousand into the new year. That would make up for that loss of funding that we've suffered over the last two years. That would keep us operational through the end of our fiscal year, which ends in June, and give us, you know, the faster we raise that money, the faster we have more time and space to look into the future and do our long-term planning. Uh, Silverton Public School has already signed over ten thousand dollars and five more, five thousand more is committed. Uh, we did successfully lobby at the county commissioners to release twenty-five thousand in TANF reserves. And so this is gaining momentum, and that does bring us to you all. With Gloria's guidance, we are humbly here tonight requesting forty thousand dollars. It is a large ask, but we also know that Silverton cannot really be Silverton without its learning centers. Uh, we expect and know that if you're gonna consider us such a large ask, you want to know you're funding an organization that will succeed. We want that too, very much. Um, that is, so at this point, I'd really like to transition to our long-term plan, and hopefully in your packet, you were able to see that we're considering a wide variety of long-term funding support, corporate sponsorships, um doubling down on our grant writing efforts. We're really open to a lot of things. But for tonight, I would like to focus on, and I would be happy to answer any questions you have about that document, but I do want to focus our time on you, the town trustees. Um, so please do notice that we want to consider, you to consider and the county as well, uh, to be our partners in this emergency funding plan and also in our long-term solution. Um, you may have read that SFLC is inspired by a Reggio Emilia approach. And we mostly really think about this for our students. This comes to life at SFLC when kids are playing with natural, organic um materials, as you saw in the pictures, or doing free-form art instead of coloring inside the lines. But Reggio Emilia is actually an approach that is infused into the civic and cultural life of the town that it takes its name from, its place. And it found itself decimated after World War II, and they decided that the only way forward after such a horrific event was to try to build a healthy society completely centered around the child and the family. They wanted their community to be a place where mothers could work and all children had access to equal and inspiring education. So in Reggio, every year during their budget, budget season, their community, their town council, sits and makes their learning center a standing-line item every single year. The families and children in that community always have a source of funding that is not subject to the whims of state or federal funding and really comes from a deeply held community value. So our board wonders, can Silverton be such a place? And I really think yes, and I think yes, because I think we kind of already are. Um, this is a hard time, but I really do take comfort knowing that Silverton has been here before. We could cast our minds back to a time when Silverton Public School was at risk of being forcibly closed by state officials due to poor performance. I really love hearing those stories from the early days of Kim White's superintendency, and she and her scrappy school board, Chris George Senior included, fought to embrace an alternative model of education where our small sizes became our asset and not a detractor. And the story of the preschool is much the same. I think it is shocking to know that we did not have formalized early childhood education in Silverton just twenty years ago. Um, and it was a group of moms catalyzed by entrepreneur Karen Hoskin, and they leveraged a lot of creative partnerships, like at the county. Um, and we have a lot of pride in our mining heritage around here, but I just love the stories of being, this history of being a community that steps up for our schools. Um, we got to hear a little bit about that from Lily, as we've been meeting with him a lot recently. And he shared with us, at the time, we thought the idea of a preschool was crazy. That is the job of families and moms in the home. And counties, counties do not do preschools. And they do, and they have, and in Silverton, that's just the kind of place we are. Um, and they have supported us big time in, in building the center, starting the center, and even now in these hard times. So I just think that that's really inspirational. Um, I'm not gonna lie, I have felt a little sorry for myself. Why does this have to happen when I'm trying to raise my family? I'm a working mom. I don't have time for this. I kind of see this as our opportunity and our time to be part of this legacy of Silvertonians uh who have stepped up for our schools at these, at these hard moments. And um I think back to when I first joined the staff at Silverton School. Charlie Schmalz was the, a board member at the time, and he said, thank you so much for joining our school. In Silverton, our schools are really what we have to be so proud of. That really touched my heart when I first took my job, and I, I think that's really cool. Um, so these are hard times for us at the center. Uh, but I have a lot of faith in this community and you as the trustees to be stewards of this legacy. Our staff and our board are really our bright spots in all of this. We have a very small, oh, we have a group of people, who doesn't say it's very small. Uh, but we have a group of people who are not willing to give up on the center, and we're just here hoping to widen that circle tonight. And I thank you so much for your consideration, and I'm gonna open it up to your questions now.
Thanks, Whitney. Questions from the board? Thoughts? Comments?
Oh, here we are. Our community is already sponsoring our snacks. We're looking for all sorts of creative partnerships right now. Um, so that's just one example. Yeah.
I don't, sorry, I have a question. I don't really like have our state representatives and senators been aware of the situation and like elevated that to the state level?
Yeah, I think what's hard about it is that on this program, the rollout of this program is largely a success. So in districts with bigger numbers, this is allowing districts like eliminate head start programs, which typically haven't had a lot of success. It's like, um, you know, really providing high-quality early childhood education, or it hasn't been uniform. And so, um, like I said, I think we're in a very unique situation in which uh the Colorado preschool program was working so well for us. And, and UPK is working better for other schools than maybe that program wasn't working as, as well as. Um, and so, yeah, the state, we've of course have contacted the state, and they're very firm, and they're like, you knew this was coming. Um, you know, we believe strongly in Universal Preschool, which is not a bad program. It really isn't. It sounds like a good program, and it is a good program. It's just, um, it doesn't have the same safeguards that CPP did for some schools. It doesn't have those same protective factors built into it. Maybe long-term, that kind of state advocacy, that would be great. Maybe there's ways to abridge and amend um Universal Preschool, but I don't see that. I think that needs to be on our like long-term solution. Um.
Yeah, Katie Stewart is our rep. She's like sits on the education committee.
She's terrific.
Yeah, I mean, she used to be a teacher. Like, this should be her bread and butter. So maybe long-term, right?
Yeah, no, really wild. And you want those types of ideas coming with them. So that's part of why we're here, to widen the net and widen the brains. But you're absolutely right. Um.
Other thoughts, questions from the board?
You mentioned that one of the other schools that was sort of taking advantage of the state benefits like we were, um, they were combined with their school district. Is there, have you guys looked into whether that's feasible for us and if that's good for the program? Like to combine with?
With Silverton Public School? Yes, absolutely. We, we have started initiated those conversations as well. Um, I like that idea a lot, and um I think that type of, I don't really understand why it would take a long time, but that the timeline we've been given, and we actually kind of want to talk to that other school and see how they did it. But the timeline we've kind of been given is that's more, yeah, two-year thing out. And I really, I do want to explore that seriously, because you know, funding, funding will shift, and, and that kind of safety net feels, would feel really good for our, our program. Um, but yeah.
And Carl?
You just said it's a two-year.
That's a estimate. It's just, it would be a longer timeline to become part of the school board.
So how far are you guys in that process, knowing that the funds were?
In becoming fully incorporated at this, into the, into Silverton Public School. I mean, we, we've just very recently started those conversations. Um, not that we don't consider them a strong partner. Elizabeth Bars, our superintendent, is fully um supported and helps draft this emergency funding plan. And from her perspective, from ours, that's kind of our first fish to fry. And we, we want to stay open. We want to stay open um right now. And then, yeah, we want to like get as creative and uh diversify our funding source a little more.
I don't have any questions, just to comment. I know the, the work that the staff at the Family Learning Center does is so impactful, and the community that that place has built and sustained is, it's a really core part of the broader Silverton community. And I really hope that together and collaboratively, we can keep you guys open.
Yeah, I'm so glad you brought that up, Carl. So besides the families that we serve, I mean, we're also an employer, and we want to keep our teachers employed. It's a very hard job. We're very lucky that we have amazing early childhood educators in our community, and that gives me a lot of stress to think about our, our staff, um, not having that source of income or the ability to like share their gift. It's our gift with the world, showing up every day and being an early childhood educator.
And I, I just think it's, it's even a short closure would have a pretty big ripple effect in our field.
We will lose our staff. They would have to find other work. I mean, they don't, yeah, yeah, absolutely. You're absolutely right about that.
I'd like to comment that I have staff who relies on this program to be able to work.
Thanks, Mario. Thanks, Whitney. That was a really great presentation. I really appreciate the transparency, the thoroughness. Um, I think to Carl's point, when I think about childcare, I think of all the aspects that it touches, right? You have employers that rely on it. You have employees that rely on it. It is an employer. You have new moms who are able to be early childhood educators and have their kids with them. Like, it just is this whole encompassing service. And wearing my public health hat, when we did our community health assessment with public health two years ago, childcare did not percolate as a top priority, like housing, like, you know, access to healthcare, et cetera. But it's because it was so well cared for. Like, it was a, it was a basic need that was being met so well. And I was reading health assessments from, you know, Lake County and other rural communities and other mountain communities, and childcare was an absolute top priority for these communities because they didn't have something like SF, SFLC that was so reliable and affordable. And, you know, Lindsay, to your point, I was in a meeting with Senator Hickenlooper um last week, and I kind of advocated for this, right? Like, this is a key thing that our community is facing. And I think it highlights further how important it is for rural voices to be heard when state legislatures or federal legislatures are making policies. Because again, UPK could be really great um for the vast majority, just like lots of funding mechanisms can. But for some small communities like ours, there's just a basic cost to providing services, whether you have ten kids or whether you have thirty kids. You still have to have certain numbers of teachers, and we have to have a certain wastewater treatment plant, whether there's six hundred of us or a thousand of us. And so we kind of bear the brunt of those inefficiencies, right? Rural communities operate more inefficiently because we're so small. And so I, I would just love to advocate for you guys as well. I have long believed that the success of Silverton as a whole is very tied to the success of our early childhood center and our public school. If we don't have robust education centers here, people won't live here. Young people won't stay once they start getting married and having families. Like, people will not live here because we don't have a vibrant place for kids to grow up. So, um, I think we can have a discussion about what this means. I mean, I think what the board has to consider right now is like, do we have flexibility or budget for the forty thousand dollar emergency request? And then, as we go into budget discussions for the future, we have to have those priority discussions, right? Just like we do with our other nonprofits and elsewhere. So I think it's kind of, this has been so well taken care of for so long that um it hasn't percolated to the top. But if this closed because you couldn't get your emergency funding, like, that to me feels like a community crisis, because of the number of people that it does touch tangentially and directly. So.
Um, I have a process, yes, and then, so for the emergency funding, we would have to go to like the next meeting to be able to make that decision.
Okay, so we draft a resolution. Me who give staff direction to draft a resolution um to basically amend the budget for that emergency funding.
Mm-hmm. I guess, I don't know, finance committee or Gloria, that's?
That's, I was about to say that. Shouldn't this have come to the finance committee first, since this is a big-ticket item?
Um, since it's such a big, I'm bringing it to the whole board. Um, and we were very conservative in our budget estimates last year. Um, and rightly so, we needed to, to, to preserve our, our funding. Um, so we were, we ended up with three hundred and sixteen thousand dollars more in our ending fund balance than originally estimated. So I want to be transparent that that is something that you can afford, but it is also up to you to prioritize as well. That's not to say we should spend the whole three hundred and sixteen.
That was not a blank check. Just so we're clear, we're gonna have people lined up outside the door. Um, I think the other point I wanted to make that I think shouldn't be lost is that there's been such community investment from the county, from the land, from the, from the public school and elsewhere. Like, those are not sunk costs, right? If, if the SFLC cannot continue to persist, like, those are losses that we experience. And I think that investment, this is kind of like making continued investment on investments the community has made thus far.
Well, government serves a role of like serving the community in essential functions. This is like an essential function. I think I was just curious some process and like how quickly this needed to happen. And then if there was the request for the long-term support, like what that would look like too, is we enter budgeting season and like prioritize. So, so I don't know, it's like forty, I don't know what forty thousand would look like every year, but.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Right.
Might not look like that moving forward. Those are the kind of, just the conversations we want to, we want to learn, we want to initiate and learn your process as well.
Yeah. Well, it seems like you're coming at good timing, even though it doesn't feel like good timing, because we have the, we have a better picture of what our ending fund balance is. So we have a better picture of what we might have to work with, and we're also entering budget season, so we can talk about line item priorities. Any other questions for Gloria? Or Gloria, did you want to add any more context or any other kind of spending things that you think are coming? That have a?
I have that um discussion on the fifteenth. Um, so between this and the next meeting, you'll have a budget um work session that you can work through kind of all the numbers at that point. Um, so that's another touch point that we can do uh as far as looking at the numbers before the next meeting, if you want. Um, I know. Um, I know that Willie has agreed to increase funding, um, but also it's more on a monthly basis, right? And so it's like a reimbursed, well, kind of like where are you guys at right now? We'll cover that up to a certain amount. Um, so that's another option.
And again, another context that Wendy, you didn't bring up is public health is also being able to support FSFLC through the county and through state public health grants. And that is likely, like, again, public health dollars are drying up. So I just think the physical reality is challenging in a situation like this.
I, I think that's just the most important part of this conversation. It's like, it's not to stop that measure, but it's how do we make this sustainable? And I'm sure the town has a role in it, but I think there are a lot of, there are a lot of different uh, pieces that are going to have to be pulled together to make this happen and to make it sustainable. And I really hope that our conversation is clear-eyed about the, the long-term picture as well.
Yeah, and I think too, you know, it can be tricky. Um, the school, the, the big school is really, what's it called, SFLC? The big school is really good at getting a lot of grants funding. Um, and a lot of grant dollars are tied to specific programs. And so you can see that our monthly budget really just goes to being open. So local funding sources would really help us with general operating costs, which some grants will may cover. And some grants really just don't in the educational landscape, maybe in your landscape as well. But I think if we had a baseline of local funding support, we become a more competitive, you know, like more competitive when we're applying for grants. Because we have some of those general operation costs coming that isn't like tied to grant funding, where we're kind of trying to, you know, you know, play that game, like, uh, make our program, which our program exists and we want to make it align with grant funding. But that can be a trickier uh, thing to do as a school. Like, we just, sometimes you just need to be open. You just need money to be open.
Well, and to Carl's point, I appreciate your efforts that, you know, your first, one of your first steps was looking at your tuition rates and evaluating it, right? Because showing that families have real skin in the game as well for making sure this is affordable. But yeah, I mean, childcare is one of everybody's most expensive line items if you have kids, right?
Yeah.
Housing, food, and caring for children. Um, yeah, so. So I guess the question to the board is, does the board want to give staff direction that we draft a resolution for next meeting for the emergency funding? That's one question. The second question is, do we want to give staff direction to situate this in the 2025, 2026, or 2026 budget discussion for line item? And or do we want those discussions to happen in the context of our next budget work session? We can't, we can't approve the resolution in the work session, but um, so do we want another meeting to assess or read one staff direction?
If we put $40,000 in the budget for 2026, what's the likelihood that you're going to be able to get the matching funds to?
Oh, um, in terms of like the long-term funding plan or the short-term funding plan?
No, but for like, so separating the emergency $40,000, I think. Um, you're probably going to find a lot of agreement that we want to keep this open, but moving forward, um, we write $40,000 in the next year's budget.
I.
Are you going to come up with the difference?
Well, I think the good news is, you know, a, a pretty good chunk of our pie is still from grants. So I don't see us getting maybe some new grants, but we do have good relationships with kind of like standard Colorado foundations. Um, and we are, you know, like, in, in conversation with them, like, can we still kind of rely on a similar amount of money that we have? So I think that that piece is hopeful. Um, I think that, um, it's hard to speculate about the future, but and I welcome, we welcome feedback, we welcome great ideas like you're bringing to the table. But everywhere we've gone, we've kind of received different ideas from people. And I think something we're feeling optimistic about, or we, I don't know if optimistic is the right word, but we're prepared to pursue with a lot of fidelity is Willie went ahead and we started these conversations. Our initial strategy was to lobby them for, they have a lodging tax that has um, some wording about affordable housing and childcare, which we are the only childcare provider. And so we thought, oh, hey, like, can we get some of that? Um, and the county just wants to do due diligence, keep that fund large, make sure they can support us and affordable housing. But they did bring to our attention this idea of adding a ballot initiative to next year's 2026 November ballot that would increase the lodging tax, even just 1% would essentially, and if the wording was right on the ballot and it was solely dedicated to SFLC, that, I mean, that could be like $100,000 right there. So um, that organization, the Early Childhood Council that I mentioned, uh, they actually have helped small schools do a similar sort of ballot initiative, and they can help us learn how to do that basically and do it right for next fall. Um, so I think that's something we will put a lot of weight into, and that feels like that would be, you know, within the next year or so that could really, really, you know, help us make up that difference. Um, and then, and then even, you know, even if our standing line item with the town was a small amount, I think that still goes a really long way. So we're just not, it worked for a long time, but we, we just want to be honest. The, the forecast is just not good for, safe for us right now. And so we want to be, we want to, we want to look closer to home.
And I think with what I was trying to get at is, I mean, is $40,000 enough? Or are you going to, you know, and because one thing that, you know, in my time here, we've noticed is that when somebody does need money, they'll come in. And then sometimes it's, you know, they'll come back like, well, actually, and just want to be really, like Carl said, really transparent about like what the cost could be down the road.
Oh.
Um, and just making sure that, you know, and again, it's, it's going to be a values discussion for most people, like.
Yes.
If it's a value that's, if it's something we really value and it's a priority, you know, then I don't think people are going to have a hard time going above that. But also if other funding sources don't come through and we give, you know, we, we've given $40,000, you guys need another $10,000, $20,000 just, you know, I guess we're going to need to be prepared to take a long, hard look at that as well.
Yeah, our goal is to be sustainable.
Yeah.
For you to be sustainable, we want to be sustainable.
It would be to not make emergency funding requests again, but to be part of your budget season each year and say like, I guess that's my process question. Uh, we initially approached Gloria with like, this is our fundraising goal. We had a dollar amount in mind that we knew. And Gloria was able to say like, I think this, and we had identified where we thought um, money could come from in other places in the community. And that was a back and forth conversation. So that felt good to us. Like, we would prefer that kind of dialogue where, you know, we have, we know our numbers, we know what it takes to operate. We can look and see where we think our other money will come from, and we want to hear from you what you feel willing to invest in the future. And maybe that's kind of a back and forth of, this is what we need, this is a gap we have. Um, but that's, yeah. We didn't um, assign a number to that long-term ask because, because we want to learn, we want to learn from you all.
Thanks, Wendy. So for the board, decision-making self-correction question is, are we giving staff direction to draft something for the next meeting? Or are we discussing this again at our work session? I would say if the tension of the board is to fund this emergency request, then let's move forward. If you would like more information or if you think about it more, then that's different.
I mean.
Go ahead.
There you go.
I, I think we should um, do the emergency funding right now. If we can afford it, I think it's too important. Um, and then moving forward, I think, you know, we're going to need to hopefully work with them and make sure that it's sustainable. But in order to keep the doors open, um, yeah, I would be for trying to get the, giving direction to the staff to get this moment.
So, Lindsay?
I was going to say the same thing. And then maybe in the, if it's too soon, as we start budget season, knowing like what the next few years requests too could be as well, like having that conversation, I think would be helpful for that sustainable model. Because it's like, we want to make something last if we're going to invest in it.
Great. No, that sounds really good. Sam, Carl?
I agree. I think it will be really helpful in our next conversation to think about the next couple of years rather than just the current budget shortfall. But I totally support the emergency funding.
Yeah, knowing that we have money in the budget right now, money in the bank to, to carry this over for 2025, I am fully in support of that. I would like to see proper channels, finance committee, work session on anything going forward past 2025. Um, so that we can have those discussions that we need to have and then also gather additional information. Because dollar amounts like this historically in the past, um, come with additional information provided uh, in that request. Um, that's what I would like to see. And it's not just, this is a beautiful um, uh, request. But in this form of information that I'm discussing, that I'm talking about, that has been provided to the finance committee and for work session is, is more in-depth.
Yeah.
Or some sense.
Melina has these slides, and then I also did bring our most recent profit and loss, if that kind of financial documentation is what you're talking about, Jim. Um, do you want me to give it to you right?
You don't do it to me, right?
You have my copies. Uh, yes, I fully understand it's hard.
Yeah, I am, I am in absolute fear of this.
Thanks, Jim.
Yep.
I am as well. So Gloria, I think, yeah, staff directed to producer for next time. And we'll kind of situate this with our priority conversation for budget season.
So thank you so much.
Thanks. Thanks for your efforts.
And yeah, maybe Stuart was a great idea, Lindsay. I like that.
Yes, yes, thank you.
And Barbara.
How many more do you have? She hasn't even like emailed us.
She left.
He's been married.
Yeah.
All right.
All right, we're moving on to agenda item 7A. This is Resolution 2025-26, a resolution rescinding stage two municipal fire restrictions. And Gloria, I think you had new context for us.
Yeah, so this one's going to change. Um, I, let's see, at the direction of Jim Donovan, who was working with, on behalf of the sheriff's um, order to keep in line with the BLM, would be going down to a stage one. Um, and this is all for your consideration as well, but that is the recommendation of the sheriff and Jim Donovan. Um, so I redrafted the resolution um, back to our stage one language um, that we adopted earlier this year um, with a couple of clarities in there, such as uh, wood burning stoves uh, without spark protectors. Um, so you, if most wood burning stoves in town do have the spark protectors, um, so you can still have a fire at night. Um, and this is just more for the open kids. Um, unfortunately, I wasn't able to get either of them to approve the language play, um, because I found this out at four o'clock. So um, we are working on this blind right now.
But this is back to the same.
Yeah, it is.
It's just a step down.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify some of the language in there because we did receive calls when we did the stage one.
Yeah.
Um, so hopefully it's clarified a little bit more.
Especially this time of year as nights are getting.
Yeah, you, you can still burn your, to stay warm, as long as you have a spark protector.
Any questions? All right, I entertain a motion to approve Resolution 2025-26, a resolution rescinding stage two municipal fire restrictions and implementing stage one fire restrictions within the municipality.
So moved.
Second, eight, what call please, Melina? Iverson?
Yes.
Edgar?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Good to have them.
Yes.
Edgar?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, agenda item 7B, these are RFQ responses for the Blair Street project. We have Steve and John with us. Those quite fun to read. I, that, yeah. Thanks for all those.
All right. So, uh, John and I got to review them. And sort of provided that direction of two that kind of, while we acknowledge all of them would be capable um, of taking on this project, given um, certain characteristics of, of these four, we were able to bring it to two. And then recently, um, there was some slight pieces uh, of information that came about that led us to bring it down to one, is my understanding. And um, and that is uh, leading us to provide direction to go with PST as an engineering program or firm for this project. And I'm happy to answer questions or elaborate more, but just kind of a big point and.
Great. Um, so for anybody listening, this is an RFP for um, an engineering firm or company to do C dot specific plans that are up to C dot standards for the Blair Street sidewalk plan. Um, yeah, was there any pertinent update to share with the trustees on the recommendation for going with um, PST? Or references or?
So I did call and make some reference checks and uh, for PST, it was going reviews from those. Uh, I think it's from my phone calls and me and Steve kind of going through everything. PST kind of fits this small project a little bit better. And so that's kind of some of the direction that we wanted to go with. But again, the, the phone calls helped to vet a lot of that.
Great. I mean, when I was looking, I was like, well, I don't know how to evaluate all this criteria. And there was no budget, you know, because we gave the budget. So I was like, well, I don't know how to evaluate these, but I, you know, appreciate the staff recommendations.
They were all four good presentations. You just got to go through it with a fine-toothed comb and really watch some stuff.
That's why I'm not a civil engineer and that's the recommendations presented. Other questions from the board on the proposals or the process or?
Yeah, I mean, I think it might just be helpful to like get some, if you're willing to share some of those details of like why specifically PST and um, as opposed to some of the others, because I think there's a few presentation, there's like, they're all, uh, some of them are really well-designed and have pretty pictures and stuff. And so I think it's, clarity there, I think would be helpful.
Good point.
Yeah, you got to look through some of that.
Hmm.
Uh, PST, in my opinion, was uh, a little bit more hometown. They seemed like they had a good working relationship with uh, C dot. Of course, some of them did, all, all of them did. But uh, a little bit more, when I called references, they're like, the, the one gentleman told me, you need something, they'll jump in a vehicle and they'll come on site. And just those local, even one of them, and I can't remember which one, you know, some of the landscaping was a firm in Denver. You're not going to, in my opinion, you're not going to see those people on site. Where if you get somebody that's a little bit more local, has a little bit more of a connection, then it's, it's a little bit easier to work with that company.
And they, they also had a, like a letter of recommendation from C dot.
Yeah.
Yes.
So I think what I'm, I have a feeling, like a spidey sense, that our community is going to be a little annoyed, that Blair is going to be worked on, construction is annoying, and everyone's going to have opinions on what it looks like, um, which we're going to hear about. So I think I'm just wanting to make sure this is the time of doing the due diligence that it's going to look nice, it's going to be efficient and going to be like worth all of this time and effort that everyone has put into this project for like, what, 10 years now? So I, that's my uh, i's and t's kind of check.
And, and I understand those concerns, but on the other end of that, it doesn't matter who we pick.
Yeah.
That is going to be during the construction phase, an issue. And we will try and minimize that as much as possible with, with foot traffic, with vehicle traffic. And I, I think them being closer, it's a little bit where a phone call and hey, I need you guys up here. We need to get this resolved or figure something out different. I think there's opportunities there to make it more streamlined, so.
I also liked that they just even called out seeking out local contractors. I think that was an interesting thing that I didn't notice in the other proposals. So I appreciated that. And that was an interesting thing that I didn't notice in the other proposals, so I appreciated that. And some advice on just how to do well or, you know, low, lower the barriers for small scale local contractors to. Do some of this work, but also to make sure that it's done in a way that is the best benefit to the town. I like that.
I think it all spoke to acknowledging, um, the need for the, the story and, um, to be told. And that that would be. Worth going out to another party to, to really emphasize that. And some of them overlapped with that third party and, and then other criteria within sort of. Vetting them kind of led towards. Through the main overseeing firm being PST. I think there were some that. Very much. You know, while very capable of going through the C dot process and federal funding process, aren't a much larger scale. You know, I think John spoke to the hometown kind of size. So that was how one firm was like, okay, in discussing with John, just kind of bringing it down to.
I think too, it'll be important to me is to really make sure that this is a firm that will engage with the Blair Street Association. Because again, all of them had some components of public engagement, but at the end of the day, those are the folks that have the biggest scheme in the game, right? There, those are the businesses that are gonna feel the most disruption. We can all have opinions about how it looks and what it feels like. But I think that's the group that's really champion this, push this. I think helping. Helping contain them to a contained vision and scope and then also listening to them and having a, a. Firm that will engage that group to really kind of nail down what's feasible, what's in the budget, what's engineering. Appropriate, um, but really hearing from them. Because we can certainly do public comments with everybody, but.
Yeah.
To me, that's a group that.
Well, this is like the big opportunity, you know, you got this money, we want it to work for, I mean, especially the Blair Street Association.
Exciting to see this funded.
Do you think they'll be good with the public engagement kind of?
I do.
Okay.
I, I, I think their, their whole, whole tone was really well. And, and I, I agree that, you know, you gotta engage them, even the historical society. That you gotta bring everybody together. And, and then you can move forward with that engagement and because you're gonna have lots of various opinions and. Yeah. But I, I do think that, uh. Again, with the references, it made me a lot more solidified in my decision that this was the direction we should move. So.
What it's worth, I did really like those cool pictures of those out corners. There's like, well, there's so much space for pedestrians, it's not getting run over. That was really cool, so. Well, just like, it needed so much cool space. I thought it was a really cool, I thought the visual there was really cool. But, yeah, other questions about PST or moving forward?
Any comments from the Blair Street Association?
I have not heard any.
No, I talked to Mike Gariak. Last week or the week before. And we were going, I, I thought Bill was gonna be on here, but I think he made it, so. They were excited that we were moving forward with the design. He was.
And one question I had was, okay, so this is the design and nothing. When we ultimately go out to bid to do the project, the same con, same firm could bid to do the project as well, right? Or a different one, like that, that would be the next. Getting it on these plans.
That's where it'll get competitive.
Yeah.
With, you kind of hope that they stay with it.
Yeah.
From start to finish. That's your best case scenario. But there is always that possibility that, hey, we're, we're gonna go this way, but, uh. I think they're a good firm to, because this is where you start the, the nuts and bolts of everything. And so you need to have that good firm ground and a good plan moving forward. And then picking a contractor, yes, you have to pick the right one, but that's a little bit easier. Once you have that, those estimates of what, what it's gonna cost and. And those revisions over revisions of, no, we don't like this or somebody else doesn't like this and. It, it's a lot of work.
Yeah. But we, but awarding this doesn't lock us into also awarding them the contract for the exhibition. Yeah. Hey, so do we give staff direction to? Award the contract?
Do we do a motion to?
We do need a motion, yeah. Are there any board concerns or opposition? Would anybody like to make an argument against awarding it to PST?
No.
Hey, well, I would entertain a motion toward the. RFQ for the Blair Street Revitalization Project to PST Engineering.
So moved. Second.
I don't know, I, I hear Carl first, I think. Yes.
Yes.
George?
Yes.
For Tim Harper?
Yes.
The cracker?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thanks, Steve, and for keeping this moving forward. John, thanks for your eyes on this. It's exciting. Progress is exciting. We might get a sign in sidewalks. Wild. All right, give me one second to get through the end of all the RFPs. All right, we're moving on to agenda item eight A regarding the town administrator position.
All right, um, so if you haven't heard yet, I am taking a, a job in Basalt. On November twelfth will be my last day in Silverton and I will be the town manager in Basalt starting November seventeenth. So given that timeline, wanted to touch base with you all on kind of the next steps of this. That's easier. The next steps in replacing, um, this position. And so what I did was I reached out to, well, I reached out to three recruiting firms. Two of them got back to me. I put their quotes in. Your packet. I gave you a, a couple of options there. If you wanted to go with a recruiting for, firm, if you didn't. Kind of the timelines of all of that in your memo. So wanted to kind of just chat with you all on how you wanted the process to play out. Uh, I do have a recommendation in there if we were to appoint Melina as the, um. As the interim and then, uh, go with a recruiting firm. And, and the reason I did that was, as I was thinking about it, I did have two interims in mind. Both of them were engaged or not able to be here for a whole month at a time. Gonna serve you all. And so thinking about the fact that Melina has to kind of train a new interim. And then train the new administrator. I kind of approached her and, and asked her if she would just maybe be interested in being the interim and she graciously said yes. Um, if, if that is an option, uh, the other option is to go out for an interim. And the reason why you put an interim in his place so that you could, you could really take your time in selecting the right person. To fill this position really. Um, so I, I definitely recommend, recommend an interim. Given that, yes, I do have a couple more months here, um, but being able to hire a new, uh, administrator and then having, I mean. I gave three months until I could start my job, so if, if you had someone, and I think John, you had two months, right? Like, if you have a job already, it's, it's hard to make that, that transition really fast. So anticipating anywhere from four to six months of, before you get an, a new person placed. But yeah, happy to answer any questions on there and, um, just kind of wanted to prompt you all to have this discussion so that. Uh, we have some direction on how to, how to fill this seat.
Thanks, Gloria. Well, I know I speak for the whole board that we just have so much appreciation for everything you've done and we are very sad to see you go. And this memo was a huge relief to me because since Gloria told me that she was leaving, I haven't had a lot of sleepless nights and anxiety. How in the world we get to this next process? So as she always does, she is helping us through a good transition. So I appreciate the options here and I think there's really some good stuff to consider. I feel relief from having some things that we can consider here to kind of get us. We'll never be able to replace you, but hopefully there's someone really great out there that's ready for this challenge because we're a lot of fun. Oh, board discussion on kind of the pros and cons that we have in front of us. I think there definitely could be made some different arguments in a lot of different directions. So thoughts from the board?
I have a question of finance committee again, maybe, or Gloria, I guess in terms of like budget for a firm. I think it was like twenty six and I'm trying to find it, it was like twenty. Twenty, twenty two and twenty six.
It's a lot of money.
But we won't be paying a town administrator.
Yeah, I guess that's true.
During that time.
Yeah.
As pointed out.
Yeah, well, yeah, if you went with an in-staff interim, then you wouldn't be paying a town administrator and you might have that cost savings during that time.
Well, then, so the question is. There's one that seems to have, well, okay, I guess I had a budget question approach we can. I had an opinion on approach, but we haven't talked about that.
Well, it seems like there's kind of two directions, right, of like, level of effort. Do we put? You could, you could, you could put the dollars and the intention into finding an interim administrator. And paying someone at that level. Or you could put the dollars and intention into hiring and working with a recruiting firm. And to me, it kind of, those seem like kind of two, two different options, right? Like having, having Melina interim and training the deputy clerk and recruiting, that to me feels really unsustainable. And so it seems like we're kind of deciding between a couple of different ideas.
I tend to agree.
So thoughts, does anybody have strong opinions on using a recruiting firm and spending money that way versus? Having either someone like Melina on staff as the interim and doing recruitment or hiring, hiring an interim who then does recruitment?
I don't, I think without. When Gloria had first said that she might have some recommendations for an interim that wasn't from our staff, I, I would have been into that, but if. Without her recommendation, I, I don't want to hire two people. Or why then have to hire another, having been through the.
Yeah.
Hiring process for administrators before, I would also like to use a recruitment firm.
I see nodding, Jim, you've been through this before, thoughts? Experience to share.
It's painful.
It's terrible.
Painful, agonizing. Sucks. Being out there. Now it's on record.
You know Basalt is in two counties.
Oh, they start terrible. Um, in all sincerity, I wanna. We need to have, uh. We need to strive for consistency through this process and whatever that looks like and however that best way to approach that is. That's, that is what I will lean towards every time. Consistency and not to disrupt the ship too much. With changing of seats and chairs and whatnot. So both those individuals that you had.
Yeah, one actually got the interim job in Creed and the other one, when I spoke to her at the. For an hour at the very end, she said, well, I do have a month long trip to Hawaii in January. I was like, oh, that sounds. I'm happy to keep reaching out. I just didn't think that a month absence would serve you all, um, in an interim role. So, and then I also thought of, I was talking to Willie about it and he was, you know, kind of giving me some advice. Who really fits with the culture and can keep your culture going? And that was one thing that really stuck with me and I was like, wow, I don't know if either of those women that I had identified. Would be able to kind of keep that culture going. I think they might disrupt a little bit. Um, and that, that's when I really wanted to nail down Melina.
Also, we need to disrupt her in, in the interim spot.
Right, right. You want someone that's gonna keep things, keep the wheels on the bus, um, keep it in drive, as Jim would say. And moving forward, so. And knowing that she would have a lot of support from, like, John Zarkis and, and the rest of the staff.
I think I feel a lot of anxiety about kind of like hiring twice. That, that just feels like, it feels a bit inefficient. Again, if someone had commented just like, oh, this person from outside, this is a great fit, it's just gonna work, click, 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 boom, bang. But it just feels like. Utilizing great staff that we have right here. I mean, Melina, thanks for embracing this professional development opportunity. We really appreciate it. And, uh, Melina very successfully completed her master's program. I think you are very well qualified and capable to take this. This role for this time period and so.
Really glad that you feel that.
So I think having that stability and then putting some funding into having recruiters that could just help. Boots on the ground, managing the resumes, managing the inflow, you know, that, that to me feels. Like a potentially really great use of staff and resources. But yeah, Carl, thoughts?
I think that we have amazing person here and I think that Melina will do a great job. And that will give us the breathing room that we need to do this right and to engage with the recruiter and. Not rush the process, do it efficiently, find the right person for us.
And my, my question is, so we'll be down a person, I guess essentially, so we'll have to think about maybe like what work comes off? Or like, because I'm assuming Val would take over some of the responsibilities of, well, you did two jobs.
Val is our public works admin.
Right.
Here now and I have, I have hired a, a deputy.
Okay.
To start on the twenty second. I just got that date nailed down today.
Okay.
Derek, Derek Edwards will be our new deputy downstairs. So, I mean, I'll need him to provide a good bit of support. I'm sure Val can jump in here and there, but I don't want to take away from. From her new, her new position either, so.
You're right, yeah, yeah.
You know, it's just juggling.
And then one of the goals was too, is I'm giving a lot of the projects back to staff that I had been kind of taking on, um, in each department. So my only responsibility, hopefully by the end of October, will be the budget. And get you all through that first public hearing of the budget. And then it's, it's, it's more of a slower time for an administrator, you know, after the budget. Like, can I take a deep breath unless you're dealing with wetlands, which we're not right now?
It is our job to contain.
And so it's the projects.
As we had wetlands during this time, we've had the land use permit code. Time we've had the master plan during this time and those projects are all completed. So really kind of passing it off, I, I think this is a good time to be able to step away and not have too many. Things up in the air.
Yeah, and thinking through any outstanding projects with. Infrastructure, housing. NRD, yeah. Be good to think through that. So question for the board, as far as investment, are we, is, is there a general sense that we're wanting to use? These budgeted funds for recruitment farm or would we like to do that differently? And does anybody have a great recommendation? Jim is smiling.
I'm always smiling.
You said consistency. How can we achieve this, Jim? What do you recommend?
Don't recommend anything. We need to go out and we need to hire a firm. Get the names in and run it the same way we did it before. Efficiently with the ten minute, uh, virtual interviews.
Pretty efficient, I know.
Ten minute interviews?
Yeah, it was awesome. Fun. Fast and efficient, I thought it should be. Yeah, I, I don't have really much else to provide. As far as, as far as that, I would like. Is, will a list be provided to know what you're handing off so that we too.
Oh, yeah.
Can stay on top of it to make sure enough, nothing falls through the cracks.
I can, I can provide a list on what I'm handing off.
You get a project and you. Lindsay, you're going to say something?
Uh, well, oh, there was a thing I wanted, well, that added to the list that I was reminded of. Um, was just like the land use code, like check-in that we promised everyone, so. And that's, that's a big one.
And that is still on, on Lucy's list and she's been adding to the.
That's what I, signs and lighting?
Yeah, yeah, it's a new thing every time.
Yes.
Okay. Great, but yeah, I agree.
And then I could get more um quotes if you all want. I just wanted to get something in front of you for tonight.
Generally the ballpark, right?
That's general park. Um, be fully transparent, K R W is who recruited me.
I'd say they have a lot of low, more local placements than the other firm.
Yeah. They really struck me as like, they know our, they know us. That's what it struck them. They got like, and as long as all these surrounding communities were happy with that. But with all the communities they worked with, I was like, oh, this is a firm that knows. They, they think that it like Pittkin County and. Hura, yeah, yeah, proud, yeah.
Yeah, they did the Hura one.
Yeah.
It's part of that one, so.
Catch them Alaska.
Um, do we want Gloria to call any reference? Let's see, I think there were some letters of recommendation, but are we wanting Gloria to call any of those towns for reference or do we want to move forward with one of these two?
Go with the one that took you. Can I say that?
That was transparent.
I agree.
Coaching, it's coaching season. So do you need a motion to engage in a contract with K R W?
Yeah, I, I mean, if we want to do that tonight, we can, yes. Is it board thoughts?
Sooner we start the process, the better off we'll be.
Yeah.
And, and then anyone who wants to submit an application or who is interested can go through this firm. From here on out.
Right.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Perfect.
Great. And I would imagine that ultimately we'd have the job posting on our website and.
Yeah, they'll, they'll help us with that whole. Um, and yeah, this was also the family suggestions.
We just, we just don't have the, like the staff, like you, you, I was looking at other towns, it's like, oh, the finance sector is moving the process or so and so. It's like, we just don't have the staff to Malina, you would do interim and other people to pick up stuff and have someone managing recruitment. It just not. All right, so then I'd entertain a motion to pursue a contract with K R W Associates and engage them for recruitment. So moved. I'm seconded. Well, please. Yes.
Yes.
See George?
Yes.
Do things if he doesn't vote, then you. Saying they should never really go out. They do not. All right, moving on to agenda item eight B, the Hard Rock One Hundred be put to the municipalities. And I didn't know where to put this, so I put it here to acknowledge it. Yeah, I just wanted to, to have it somewhere in the pocket. If you have a better place to put this in the pocket. The most I wanted to make just for public good was really highlighting Willis McKenzie's years of service and Charlie Fons years of service. So two locals that have just really been committed to this organization. They were inducted into the whole thing. And I think what I really like about what Hard Rock does every year is kind of they do a survey of the participants. They survey the community. They really are great longstanding community partners for the most part and really talk about their economic impact. I've, I've been approached by multiple businesses who have said like Hard Rock is so right for the community because they buy local. They tidy up, they're just pretty generally um low impact for as big as they impact that they have in terms of dollars and people here. And we know multiple now full-time residents who came here through Hard Rock, so. I just appreciate them that provides this. If we want them to come be good presentations from. Sixty million views, I was like, oh, right, I forgot, this is like a huge deal. All right, moving on to community reports, we have a Snapples Energy Board meeting. I brought, sorry, I actually asked a physical copy of our emissions report and I left it on my stairs before I left, so I'll have to bring it for the next meeting, um, but I just gave a overview of our meeting. We like went through a few different items, but one of them was the emissions report. Um, for each community, the stuff is, but any of them. Um, we talked about some different funding structures um that the Snapples under the the way that the Snapples Energy Board is organized, which we are set for this next year in the way that we're funding. Um, due to it from a grant, but I will say moving forward in point twenty seven, that might be more of a discussion, we'll need to have our own priorities, so. Okay, but community contribution, yeah, because every community joins into Snapples Energy Board for the resources provided between trainings and actual reports, opportunities that we get, so. I have been funded previously through our. So we'll have to reevaluate that. Next year, um, talk about changing the name because apparently the stuff is, doesn't resonate with everyone and I was like, don't worry guys, it's not a big deal. Partly because I still found the half of all saying, don't know if I really. Um, and then had a few other just presentations and we'll call it again, the green grants program, still accepting applications. Um, anyone in town can apply for these, they're from the business, um, a homeowner like a vendor who wants to get their landlord to upgrade their water heater. These are options as long as they can prove that they reduce emissions somehow. It's a forty-year-old water heater, I guarantee you, it would reduce your emissions for putting it up, so. What's that of them?
We do a fifty thousand dollars study to Silverton, what is that? For those green bands. So even though it is a regional green grant program, we partnered with them so that they could run for us. Um, because we didn't have the capacity to do that and then the fifty thousand dollars should be stacked in this other time, so.
None of those applications do.
And then you receive the money extra.
Another thing to know, and I was with Wiley from S M P A for two days is they're doing rebates and they do, essentially they'll finance uh upgrades as well. So I, he's going to get me that information and that's available and it could possibly be used with the green grants as well.
It's the pay-as-you-go program and a lot of electric co-ops around the state are adopting this, so again this does my landlord to see if he would be interested in using the pay-as-you-go program to replace my, replace my water heater. And I put in our bill and he just pays like that little percentage of that bill for water here. So there's ways you can really upgrade your home at a really reasonable cost without like an interest. Take advantage of. If people want more information. Green bands, you can find in the newsletter, there's information there, so pitch them up again. And then the pay-as-you-go program is S M P A. Thanks for being on that, Lucy. Okay, moving on to agenda, there were no other random sneaky meetings, right? I did meet Senator Higginson, that was a random sneaky. So, Senator Higginson was in Hura and just encouraging some of the local elected officials, so Austin, Ashley, I went down there. I know some Rachel nonprofits and this was just his attempt, you know, when not in session to kind of get into the communities. Um, that was great. It was definitely quick. You had your two minutes and so I really pitched childcare and toilets and said, um, and then obviously it came up, supporting the back country a lot, right? Just issues that everybody's having, like not even lack of funding and staff, but just inability to even get through processes to do funded work, so. Um, but I really hammered home the need for local organizations like ours to get funding for infrastructure and if you see block grants disappear and things like that, it really hurts us. Um, so advocating, so he, he is always looking for stories to share with his moderate Republican colleagues to just kind of find ways that different things, ways in which changes of spending at the federal level are impacting communities and individuals. So um, their staff is great and if, you know, anybody ever has stuff that comes up, they want to share with me. So that was helpful and definitely heard with our Hura partners. Challenges in the back country and managing use of working with our federal partners. Um, and Hura was also bringing up some ice rates in the West. Interesting, scary commentary. So that was also happening down the valley. Moving on to agenda item ten, open discussion and future agenda items. So again, we kind of have this, you know, I think the board is kind of we've had discussions about like the Halloween sign. Jumbo, so I think we've moved to a place where we have this standing agenda item, so.
I'd like to jump right in. Listening to what Megan said earlier. We're going dark skies and uh, this is the third business I've heard. We're not even allowed lighting during the day. I have voted for this, I have been a proponent for this since day one, but I also feel that we need to be promoting businesses. We need to be promoting the fact that Silverton's open. Um, and I think maybe we need to look at restrictive nature of that, of their business and possibly readdress it. Because like I said, this is the third instance that I've heard of where they're being told they can't even have lighting on their sign during the daytime. It's just, that's.
Isn't it ten days to be compliant? Yes, but that one went out of compliance. It went out of use and so then now it's non-conforming, it's a good. So against the sign code as well. So not just dark skies.
Because of the location on the public sidewalk?
Yeah, I'd like to dive into that and to like come back with an agenda item on that one. Um, there was some instances in our code that says no. So maybe. No, it was a sign. So I think the question for the board is, this is kind of a specific instance in five of us, but like may or may not be a put before a variance, right? Like that would be a question, like there, there's, there's ways in which we could talk about. Either we want to revisit language around signs and dark side lighting as part of our very useful discussion, or we want to direct staff to give information on this, this particular case or give staff direction in order.
Historical precedents. And the fact that it's a historic sign, like precedence over any of this.
I can bring you information on that.
I don't see it, do you?
Yeah, and, and you can direct. And I want to add off the top of my session on the agenda. Like I think that I asked the timeline compliances because it's like, that was why I was like, okay, well, there's other businesses that have like ten years to comply, so that's a long time. And things are just getting more efficient, more and more things are being dark skies and there's like more dogs complying, like mining, whatever. Um, in ten years, let's say theoretically. And so like, in my mind, I don't know if we addressing the whole code based on the one, like a few signs is necessary, but addressing this one instance or like making a way for exceptions in in these like historic signs or like character signs or something. It seems like we wanted to have that discussion with more information around why it is non-conforming or why we might want to think about those exceptions, then we should do it as part of an agenda. Yes. Would be the typical way to go about doing this because it's not, it's not like we're reviewing the, we're not, we're not reviewing the variance request. We're kind of saying, hey, we want to kind of consider lighting and signs in the context of what is the board's intention? What is the code say? So I think we should be clear about sort of what are we asking staff? Are we asking a staff memo around like granting a variance? But I think staff has been pretty clear that a variance doesn't apply here, so are we asking staff to just, we want to talk about why this particular case
I just think that if this is something that's come up multiple times, which it has, like this is something we could use as a case study. Like why is this not applicable? Why is this not allowed? I think the conversation should be around what's in the code around lighting signage and I think it could start pretty broad, but we're now seeing this is something that we need to.
Great. And we think this one has always been intentional about like, hey, if there's something in the land use code that's coming up that kind of we had one intention, but it doesn't seem to be like it's working for the community or what we want, then we have a decision on it, so.
I'm bigger than we even deeper. I feel bad for Lucy. It makes her look like the bad guy. She's, she's there, she's looking at the sign, she's approving it, we got a clipboard, what have you, and then she's like, say, I can't do.
It's not Lucy's fault, everybody. My fault.
It's not her fault either. It's the code as it's written. We have language around outdoor lighting, we have language around outdoor lighting, it's signs, we have language around signs and we have language around darks. And all those things have to be. It sounds like we'd like it on. Would you like that as part of the land use code, like reevaluation or you want to say no? On the wings code, same? It's part of the wings code, or like readdressing wings code, then that would be part of the discussion? Any other different thoughts?
I just didn't hear the second part.
If we're planning on having a like work session on reviewing the land use code and things are not working, should we have it as part of that discussion or would the board like it to be a standalone?
Then later. That's my, that's my opinion and for the simple fact that we're impacting a business right now because they can't eliminate their sign, I don't want to push this out for some big old conversation, why can't we?
I guess I would advocate for putting it into like a conversation as like a holistic picture under code. I think out of pure like efficiency of this is like does it, does it, I know it's like a big deal, I love, I do like that sign, but I would, yeah, blame me, fine. Um, putting it into a bigger bucket with a broader context than like a specific, so it's not like have to get on the next agenda, you have to do all this research in the next two weeks, whatever, you know.
I like situating it within the land use code discussion because we have numerous things like this that have come up that this sort of feels like it fits the same.
I think I would also like it in the context of like, what are all of the other complaints around the dark skies too? So like it's not just the one-offs, like, you know, a few businesses, a few homeowners, it's like, what are we actually trying to address here?
It's kind of too dark.
Well, so that's well, then that's a question that I would ask maybe staff advice on. Do you feel like this issue in particular relates more to the land use code discussion? Which is related to our dark sky efforts or should this be more situated within kind of an update on dark sky compliance and where we're going and what our intention is? Like, what do you think is better from a staff perspective, knowing all the ways we've worked on the land use code and all the ways that we've worked on dark sky efforts?
No, I would love to consult Lucy on that one. So if you, if you allow us to have that discretion on, on kind of that particular, if we want it to be overarching or specific, um, I'll ask Lucy on that one because she's the one that's been receiving a lot of these, this. Back and I don't want to seek for her on this.
Does the board agreement on that?
She's leaving.
No, we didn't accept.
Show up as far as you want.
We didn't accept the letter resignation.
Uh, I, I do follow up.
Yeah.
And it's about Mario's comment.
Yeah.
I, I would like to talk about this, the decibel levels and sound and noise and all that because in 10 years, I have never heard anything like that.
Yeah.
Be over by seven o'clock. And I mean, I have plenty of opinions on the topic, but I think it's something we should probably get some more in-depth knowledge on.
Um, I think I would recommend that as well. I've been in a couple of these conversations. I've gotten a couple of emails. And so I think that we need, we need the board to understand what is the current state statute and then what are our abilities within that, whatever our intentions are. Um, so I think it'd be great to have that discussion. Can, I would prefer to have it sooner rather than later for that one. On kind of what does our noise ordinance look like? What are our options around what the statute is and, um?
Why, I think there's a bigger discussion as well because we had, we have noise ordinances on the books.
Yeah.
And if what we're hearing is correct, they're no avoid. What we had.
I think we can get some more of the input from.
So I would really like to have them. Thank you. Yes.
And I think we have options. I'd like to give the board optional.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure.
Take off and.
Things that are mentioned like specific decimal limits, for example, is really coming from, so.
Seven PM almost, yeah.
Seven PM is in our code, but it's, it's around something very specific.
But this is a big item.
Yeah.
So could this be, I think we'd all really like to talk about this loudly. We'd like to talk loudly about this. I know I'm for the limit and it, but it's not.
Seven twenty. That's important, right, John?
Um, we have it on the next agenda and I'd love to have Clayton's input on how other communities work with noise at various levels. So Clayton, we'd love to have your input on the next agenda item for how the town moves forward with state statute and potential options for enhancing our cultural opportunities.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
And considering that one of the items in our code is unnecessary noise, I think necessary noise would be a great opinion.
Necessary noises would be a name. Yeah.
I'm putting that out anyway.
All right. So I have direction from this open discussion to bring back more information on the noise ordinance um, and work with Clayton on how other communities deal with state statutes and options. And then, um, the second one, uh, direction or the first direction I would say was uh, include the dark skies and reevaluating the LUC land use code regarding the dark skies. Um, and then some questions on the historic nature of the sign. Um, so kind of putting this all on the dark sky portion.
And it sounds like, let me put a finer point on it. It sounds like we're talking about in relation to signs in the business district. That's what's coming up.
Lighting in the business.
Lighting in the business districts. Okay.
So does it relate to lighting signs, even though Megan's is not compliant with signs? I just want to.
I guess that's a bigger question. Why? Why would it not?
It is in the email, um, and I'll find it.
I, I read it.
Yeah.
I don't agree with it.
And well, that's what our code does. Do we want to reevaluate our sign code?
I think, I think it'd be nice to have a discussion.
Okay. So maybe that case study does need to be situated within both signs and lighting. Okay. So is it a sign? Is it a light? Okay.
With safety.
Anything else, um, during this discussion? Any other emails you'd like to discuss? I would know for the board, again, this is kind of, the board gets emails from public community members making requests. So I would give to the board that this could be the opportunity to say, hey, we all got that email. Do we want to talk about it or put in the agenda? Um, we got an email about purchasing property, you know, all those kinds of things. And so I think it's potentially useful to use this time. And again, if we say, no, that's not something worth pursuing, and I don't want this agenda item to just turn into a total. We talk about anything, but this can be used as an opportunity to say, hey, that came up. We all got the email about it. What do we want to do?
We want to talk about that email for purchasing a property? Like, I think we would have to move. Is that executive session territory?
Didn't it fall into land banking?
I mean, that, that would be a question for Clayton if you.
So Clayton, what happened is that the board has gotten an email. We've been approached by a landowner in town that would like, that has made an offer of land. And the board is, it's up to the board on whether we even want to have that conversation, but the question is, do we have that conversation in executive session or can the board right now here say, we want to prioritize this or we do not in terms of a real estate conversation?
Are you, are you talking about having a public conversation vice an executive session to discuss? Um, like the purchase or acceptance of property under the core exception? What do we, I, I guess I don't really.
Well, let me put it this way.
Understand the question.
No, I just don't know how to have it.
So if Lindsay, if you were advocating and board members agreed that, hey, this was interesting and intriguing and I would like to pursue it more, then I would say that is when we would, in the session, give staff direction to say, hey, we want to have an executive session to talk about this. So I would say in this agenda item, we wouldn't be talking about the specifics of that email.
Right.
But if you wanted to say, hey, is anybody else interested in?
But following the chain, we would, one of the trustees would approach Gloria and say, hey, we got this information. We'd like to follow up.
I think Gloria, you were on this too, right?
Yeah.
So, yeah, Mike, I, I think it's fine. My concern is that I'm wondering what if it's for legal advice on accepting gifts of land, I think that's one thing. But if it's for negotiation of a real estate sale or contract, we might have an issue because of the way that it's been presented, at least to me just now, is that it sounds like a gift. And you're not purchasing it. So there is no negotiation that you would need to um, keep under executive session. So I would just ask to go through staff and then, um, allow me to, allow me to review the email and see if I can't. Um, if I can't put it into a category, uh, whether or not to, so I can give you a better answer whether or not we need to have a discussion public or whether or not there's a, an exception, um, to, um, opens meeting law, open meeting law that allows us to go into executive session.
Yeah, thanks. And it is not, the email is not, it's not as a gift. It's an offer, it's a sales price that is offered.
Okay. Yeah, it, it sounds like we might have some options there.
Anyone, I don't know, keen on discussing further?
Yes, I would like to discuss it further, but I like Clayton's idea to, yeah, he'll give us advice as to where to just fix it.
We could either add it to the next agenda meeting as a, as a agenda item, or if Clayton thinks that we should go into executive session, we could do that.
Let me also check in with the board. We are talking about constraining ourselves to extra projects also. And Gloria is also leaving. And so I'm curious how our future agendas are shaping up. And even if this is something that we want to pursue, this email in front of us is, um, longstanding? So my question of board is where would you like to put this in the timeline of priorities? Do you want it at the next meeting? What, weeks after that?
I, is it longstanding though? Because they yeah.
Yeah.
It'd be the conversation. I think it might not be longstanding for much longer based on the tone.
It's up to the board to decide. I, I think it's, I don't know if it's like top priority, but it's worth discussing in a, and in the appropriate setting in which Clayton recommends.
And Clayton, I just sent you that email.
And we don't need to take reaction, I think, but we can just.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Great. And to put it also in context, the town has been approached in the past by other plots of land. So should we situate this within the context of additional land banking discussions or are we going to consider this in isolation?
Who will be discussed? Okay, great. Well, I think there's some criteria around that of like where and what for. And so I think that's what I'm trying to say is like, that's for that discussion.
Exactly. Yeah. Does it fall under land banking or is it something totally different? Not again.
Yeah, is it land banking for us?
Not again.
Is it green space?
The purpose, I think is worth having.
Gloria, did you have any other thoughts there or as you see things shaping up, you pack you have?
I mean, I could, I could do a agenda memo soon. I don't know by the next meeting, but um, soon on all the options, um, and could prioritize this if you guys need it by the next meeting.
I would argue push it one. Is that okay? Okay. Man, lively, open discussion. What else? The other emails or sneaky meetings? Okay, great. I think we've got, I think that was the stuff at everybody's top of mind that we'd had comment on. Okay. Moving on to public comment at the end of the meeting, we opened it up for public comment. All of our attendees have left. We love to have.
Now we've gone.
Oh, if you have public comment, you're welcome to make public comment. And if you're on Zoom and like to make public content, you can click the hand button and we'll promote you to panelists.
What do you, nothing?
All right. Seeing none, we'll close public.
Oh, there she is.
Oh, okay. We got public comment.
Jim, did I just hear you call my name to say hello?
I did. I was, I was hoping you raised your hand.
I did to get on here, but that's all. Um, you've got a lot of fun in this meeting that's going to take forever to solve and good luck to it.
Thank you.
Okay, give me just a second. Um, we're going to be entertaining a motion to enter executive session. Give me just a minute to get my language. Would we be okay to take like a two minutes then do the motion? Would that be all right? Everybody can take a quick break? Or can we, do we need to make a motion first? Clayton, can we, um, have a quick recess for everybody in the room and then entertain the motion to enter executive session?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, that's fine. Is, uh, it's just, uh, it should also be a break in the regular meeting then. That's fine.
Sure. Great. Yeah. So we'll take a break in the regular meeting. We'll have a recess for five minutes. We'll reconvene at seven thirty-five.
I'm. 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 I'm.
I'll let you read everything and then I'll lock us and get us off.
Great. So we, I will now entertain a motion to go into executive session pursuant to. CRS twenty-four dash six dash four zero two four B for conferences with the attorney for public entities for the purposes of receiving legal advice on Silverton Square litigation.
Got a bear?
Yeah, go ahead.
Would you please read the name of the case into the statement? I apologize. I, I didn't, hadn't checked that. It's the Ruiz Ryan et al versus Town of Silverton, Colorado.
Okay. And again, this is executive session regarding Silverton Square litigation Ruiz et al versus the Town of Silverton, Colorado. Is that sufficient? Yes. Um, would anyone like to make a motion?
Someone.
Take it.
Roll call, please.
Robertson?
Yes.
Justice Schenker?
Yes.
Justice George?
Yes.
Brett Timmerman?
Yes.
The Crinker?
Yeah. Okay, the motion passes. And I will wait, let's see, are we turned on recording for executive session? Selena?
Need to get us locked and off.